Welcome to the special meeting of the Cape Coral City Council. Today is June 26, 2023. This meeting now comes to order. Please stand for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands unafraid and invincible, liberty and justice for all.
Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Gunter.
Here.
Councilmembers Cosdine.
Here.
Cummings.
Here.
Hayden.
Here.
Long.
Here.
Shepherd.
Here.
Steinke.
Here.
Welsh.
Here.
All present.
Thank you. Item four, citizens' input time. Maximum of 60 minutes is set for the input of citizens on matters concerning city government. Three minutes per individual. Please remember to state your name. We'll utilize the podium to my left, your right.
Good evening, council. Mayor, thank you for the time this evening. I made this as short as possible.
Hold on, Mr. Carter. Let me, I don't think that mic's working. Oh, there you go. Maybe just get a little closer.
Talk louder, Carter. Can you hear me now? Nope? Good evening, mayor, council.
Got it? Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you. So I'm keeping this short and sweet because I know it's a very busy meeting. You've heard a lot of opinions from a lot of different people, a lot of different places. Okay? I want to give you my two cents. After multiple reading of both attorneys' reports, I believe that any action taken against this council member would be a serious mistake on your part. In my opinion, there's a lack of real evidence and way too much hearsay. It appears to me that this is based on an angry group of people who would like to have this council member removed by any means. There's a small number of individual individuals out there that I know way too well. I'll leave it at that, guys. Any questions, Serene?
Thank you.
Good afternoon, mayor, council. Lou Navarro, Cape Coral resident. I'm not here to talk about the, this emergency meeting into the legalities of the councilwoman in question. Judge not lest ye be judged. And my fearless warrior knows that, too, up there. I can't say your names, which is a violation of the First Amendment, but we'll do that. I'm here to talk about why you are wasting our taxpayers' dollars on lawsuits to ad nauseam. You have plenty of money to waste on attorney fees, and now we have a new city attorney at what, 200K? I missed the meeting before this. What will he be doing? He's supposed to be doing all this stuff that you spend millions. You have all kinds of attorney fees you pay. I can tell you, you spent 54,000 fighting me for the bogus arrest that I had to do pro se because I couldn't get a lawyer in 2018, and 2022 is even more. It cost me 13. We will be revisiting this. I do not blame Chief Sizemore, but it was Chief Newland's watch. He's doing 137K at the school board and double dipping. Look up tripledippers.org. You fell short of the sunset on the Budget Committee. I think you wanted to get rid of my colleague, Mr. Shadrack, but you erred with doing away with the Student Advisory Board. I said that before, and Mr. Mazurkowitz was right. Why would you do away with kids? I was a teacher. Put it back. You realize you are a microcosm of a movement toward fascism in this country as well as the microcosm of our federal government? This is a matter of civil rights. What happened to innocent till proven guilty? You make up charter rules as you go along. It's wrong. I will be asking for an independent budget audit. I will be asking the Budget Committee or Advisory Board to endorse this with Mr. Shadrack. We don't need audits you pay for. It's like calling the cops on the cops and the lawyers on the lawyers. It's a joke. Lastly, I'm asking you for the return to the Student Government Advisory Board. ideology and movement. And I'm not picking on you and the school board. It goes all the way up to the top. What a disgrace.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor, I want to meet with you. Don't let me down, my friend.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Everybody ignores me here on this board except my fearless warrior. Thank you, sir. You are kind here. You let me talk an extra 10 seconds at the school board. They'd be dreaming me out.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
You're quite welcome.
Hello. Good afternoon. My name is Janine Mole, and thank you for hearing what I have to say. I live in District Four, and I have read everything about the investigation. And Ms. Cummings, I don't believe that you lived in District Four when you were elected, and that is not right. I feel like a person who represents District Four should live in that district. And we have enough problems with the old golf course, with so many houses that got destroyed during the Ian. And I just feel like we need, I felt like your answers were evasive, not direct. I mean, you never said, yes, I live in District Four at the time of the election. You never said that. And I would like to hear you say it. You accused the messenger, you wanted to, you know, you thought that person was lying because they were anonymous, and then they came forward and said who they were. I just think you need to come clean with the truth. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. Bob Lawson commented on the investigator's report. In my opinion, though, what an excellent report. Well researched, well written, reliable, given all the detail. Of note, there is more than a first council member misrepresenting her address. Throughout the report, we have a second council member who was good friends and had a close relationship with the first council member, knew where she lived, visited her there often in the second district. Yet this second council member promoted her candidacy, endorsed her for the Fourth Circuit, Fourth District. How can that be? And then after the election, when this became an issue, that second council member still failed to speak up, although knowing the true facts, allowing the first council member to stay on the council all this time, allowing the city to waste taxpayer monies on the investigation. And despite council voting for the investigation, the second council member declined to cooperate when asked for information and documents by the investigator. The second council member should be investigated as to whether he aided and abetted a fraud, which also constitutes fraud, and his grounds for removal from the council. Another part of the report, at page 16, we have the mayor, who on November 13, 2022, convened a private meeting in his office to discuss the city business with the other two council members. Of course, we don't know what occurred at this private meeting. This private meeting, when surely they knew better, appears to be a violation of the Sunshine Law. Department of Law Enforcement for investigation? I look forward to hearing your discussion.
Thank you.
Any questions?
This is an open dialogue. Any other individuals like to come forward and speak to our citizens' input? Seeing none, citizens' input is now closed. Councilmember Cosdine.
Thank you. Just for the second time to Mr. Navarro, the youth council was not dissolved. We just changed the setup. Thank you.
But that's nothing, sweetheart.
You know the rules, Mr. Navarro.
No, it isn't.
All right. We'll move on to the next item, item number five, new business. Five A is the investigation report discussion. As we all know, back on March 15, this council collectively made a motion to have an investigation into the accusations that Councilmember Cummings did not live in her district or wasn't a resident in her district. On June 15, we did receive a report from the investigator that did the investigation. And the reason that I thought it was important to have this particular meeting, and I think is the only reason why we're having this meeting today, is to determine what the next steps are, if anything. And I think that we all have had the opportunity to go through the report. And so I think at this time, as a collective body, we have to make a decision on what our next steps are. And I think that's why we're here today. I don't think we're here today to have a hearing. and notifications that we must, that we must abide by. So today, in my opinion, is only for one discussion, and that's what our next steps are. I do know that on June 23, our deputy city attorney had put out a memorandum to all of council with some options. And we all received a copy of that particular notice that we received from our deputy city attorney. I also, before I had gotten this letter, actually, I was also trying to come up with some options for us as a council. As we all know, option one is not to do anything further. And then option, then there's several options thereafter. Some are outlined by the deputy city attorney. I also spoke, reached out and spoke with a Carrie Stillman, who is the executive director of the Ethics Commission here in the state of Florida. And I gave her a synopsis of the investigation. And because it is a resident issue, the Ethics Commission, it doesn't fall within their purview. She did make a couple recommendations to me as well. She had made a recommendation that we could forward this complaint onto the Election Commission here in the state of Florida through the Department of State. She also made a suggestion that you could forward the complaint to FDLE. I do know that FDLE has a executive investigation unit who deals solely with election, it's an election crimes unit. And also, she made a recommendation that we could also pass it onto our local state's attorney. I did reach out to Mayor Fox, our state's attorney, and they would be willing to, if this council desires to, to take a look at the investigation. Again, they have the powers of subpoena. If you read the report for me personally, I would say the investigation is incomplete, mainly because a lot of the records weren't provided that I think would have been relevant in this particular case. or failed to provide that documentation. But with the powers of subpoena, I think that could, we could achieve those documents. So I think in speaking with our state's attorney, she would be willing to review the matter and then make a determination if nothing should be done because there was no crime or no regulations as far as through the Election Commission had been violated, or if she feels that there is merit to the accusations, that either her office or one of the appropriate other state agencies, she would pass that investigation on to that particular agency. So I think we have those options. We have the options outlined in the deputy city attorneys. And I'm sure some of council may have had the discussion with our city manager. I do know option four, which was forward this matter to the police department. My understanding, he would rather we did not do that. If we were going to forward it to anyone of any other police agency, it would probably, I believe our city manager would make the recommendation to FDLE and not our, not our police department. But I'll let him speak on that when the opportunity presents itself. So I think that's why we're here today. Not necessarily to go through the facts of the investigation. I think what we're here to do today is make a determination what our next steps are, if anything. So with that, I will open the floor for discussion. Anybody want to have any further discussion or? Councilmember Cosdine.
Thank you. I just, not a full discussion, but I do have a question about something you said. You talked about the state attorney's office. Wouldn't it take months or even like years for an investigation like that? I'm not a lawyer, so I'm not sure. But would that be a long investigation?
I can't tell you how long the investigation would take, but I will tell you that she said she would start the investigation immediately.
Okay.
And the length of the investigation, I would guess, would determine where that investigation takes you.
It's pretty obvious to me from the report what happened or didn't happen. And so I don't feel like I need to pass anything on to another agency. I feel like I can make a good decision here as a council member. But that's just me. Thank you.
Yeah, one last thing I want to, I wanted to say that I forgot to mention is, you know, out of the equation. Take the complainants out of the equation. Take the council members that are a part of this. For me personally, it is about the public trust that our community has in our local election. That's what it all boils down to. Take all the individuals out of the equation. That's how I look at it. For me, I want to make sure that our community has the public trust in our local election. And to me, that's what it boils down to here, for me. ultimate goal here. My ultimate goal is for our community to know when they go to the polls that they can trust in the election process. That's what it is for me here. It's not about who did what, who didn't do what. It's not about who made the complaint. Take all the personal agenda completely out of it, for me. That's what it, that's what it boils down to me. I want to be able to sit here in this seat and future councils to be able to sit in these seats and make sure that our public has the trust in our election process. So that's what it is for me. Councilmember Welsh.
Thank you, mayor. You know, we got the investigative report. Every, you know, all signs point to one thing. So aside from what we talked about before in length, the report and everything, I'm just gonna, I think I'm just gonna beat around the bush here. I'm going to make a motion to charge Councilmember Cummings with conduct constituting grounds for forfeiture of office.
Is there a second for that motion?
I'll second it.
And the reason why I wanted to do that is just to, you know, we can beat around the bush all we want. The investigation and other evidence confirms that Councilwoman Cummings did not reside at the, at the paltry address and failed to reside even four months after being elected. And the way I read the charter, and that's what we need to do, is protect the charter, is that you need to live in the residence in the district that you run for when you're running and stay in that district, hurricane or not. And it's pretty clear, even by her own letter to you, I relocated from my full-time residence due to hurricane damage. It never says that her full-time residence was in District Four. And the investigative report shows her full-time residence was in District Two. So it's pretty cut and, cut and dry. I think we only have one course of action here, which is why I made that motion. And if it, if it fails, I would also recommend, whether it does or doesn't, that we forward this information over to the state attorney's office and let them do a further investigation as well. Thank you.
Councilmember Steinke.
This isn't, this is, this is not easy. And for me, from the very start, and if you roll the tape back from when we voted for the investigation, for me, it, it all revolves around the word reside, must reside in. And for me, to see the social media posts, the emails flying around, the breeze editorials, all of this out using terms like witch hunt, political, personal, he said, she said, this is just really simple for me, and that is right and wrong. And right and wrong require facts and require, require evidence. The only thing, in my opinion, that would need to take the step further would be to provide evidence and sworn testimony in a hearing, whether that hearing is a public hearing that is held here, whether that is through the state's attorney's office. When a property management company is subpoenaed for the lease for a dwelling, they have to supply it or be held in contempt. When people are brought to the stand to provide sworn testimony of what they saw, what they observed, they can risk perjury if they want, but the truth has to come out. And so for me, it is simply about fact, not about fiction, hearsay, who likes who, who's got a grudge against the other. It doesn't have any, anything to do with that with me. It's where did the council member reside on May 10 through September 28? Certainly, if displacement happened because of the hurricane, that's an extreme circumstance. So for me, it's May 10 to September 28, not what's said on the driver's license, not what it said on the voter ID card, where were the clothes, the food, where was the car overnight in the driveway, where did the candidate reside? And if we need to get sworn testimony, and if we need to subpoena all the paperwork that identifies the truth in that matter, then so be it. And so for me, it doesn't matter whether the issue was brought forth anonymously and then the person fessed up. It doesn't matter whether the governor's office says I won't take an accusation that's anonymous. It's just a matter of right or wrong. And so if the facts are brought to bear through a subpoena, through testimony, and the council member did reside in District Four on May 10 continuously through September 28, so be it. But the evidence right now does not point to that, not one bit. And I, too, want our electorate to believe that valid candidates run and that they have valid candidates to vote for. I'm sure there have been many candidates that have said, man, I'd love to run, but I don't live in that district. There's probably dozens of them over time that have said, oh, man, I'd love to run for that seat, but I don't live there. Not, I wonder how I can make it look like I live there. So to me, it was an after the fact, make it look like I lived there. That's what all the, what's being brought to us as trust me evidence is pointing to. And so if we have to prove that trust me evidence by actually seeing a lease and demanding it, then let's see it. That's, that's where I stand and why I seconded the motion.
Thank you. Since there's no other lights on, I guess I'll weigh in again. Well, go ahead, Councilmember Shepherd. Give you the opportunity.
To the council members that spoke, if you're basing your decision on what was said in the report with my name, I can tell you everything where my name was used was false information, wasn't even close to the truth, just made up information was put in that report with my name tagged on it. So don't base your decision on anything that was said with my name, is all I'm saying. And I agree with a lot of other things you said, but just don't let that sway you in any way because I'm telling you that was false information. And I have multiple addresses myself. I have more than one address.
And the length of the investigation, I would guess would determine where that investigation takes you.
It's pretty obvious to me from the report what happened or didn't happen. And so I don't feel like I need to pass anything on to another agency. I feel like I can make a good decision here as a council member, but that's just me. Thank you.
Yeah, one last thing I want to, I wanted to say that I forgot to mention is, you know, to me, and this is just for me personally, for me, this is, take all of the individuals out of the equation. Take the complainants out of the equation. Take the council members that are a part of this. For me personally, it is about the public trust that our community has in our local election. That's what it all boils down to. Take all the individuals out of the equation. That's how I look at it. For me, I want to make sure that our community has the public trust in our local election. And to me, that's what it boils down to here, for me. So whatever it takes in order to make sure that our community feels confident that it was investigated and how that investigation, wherever it may take us, to me, that's my ultimate goal here. My ultimate goal is for our community to know when they go to the polls that they can trust in the election process. That's what it is for me here. It's not about who did what, who didn't do what. It's not about who made the complaint. Take all the personal agenda completely out of it, for me. That's what it, that's what it boils down to me. I want to be able to sit here in this seat and future councils to be able to sit in these seats and make sure that our public has the trust in our election process. So that's what it is for me. Councilmember Welsh.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, we got the investigative report. Every, you know, all, all signs point to one thing. So aside from what we talked about before in length, the report and everything, I'm just gonna, I think I'm just gonna be around the bush here. I'm gonna make a motion to charge Councilmember Cummings with conduct constituting grounds for forfeiture of office.
Is there a second for that motion?
I'll second it.
And the reason why I wanted to do that is just to, you know, we can be around the bush all we want. The investigation and other evidence confirms that Councilwoman Cummings did not reside at the, at the paltry address and failed to reside even four months after being elected. And the way I read the charter, and that's what we need to do, is protect the charter, is that you need to live in the residence in the district that you run for when you're running and stay in that district, hurricane or not. And it's pretty clear, even by her own letter to you, "I relocated from my full-time residence due to hurricane damage." It never says that her full-time residence was in District 4. And the investigative report shows her full-time residence was in District 2. So it's pretty cut and, cut and dry. I think we only have one course of action here, which is why I made that motion. And if it, if it fails, I would also recommend, whether it does or doesn't, that we forward this information over to the State's Attorney's Office and let them do a further investigation as well.
Thank you. Councilmember Steinkie.
This isn't, this is, this is not easy. And for me, from the very start, and if you roll the tape back from when we voted for the investigation, for me, it, it all revolves around the word reside, must reside in. And for me, to see the social media posts, the emails flying around, the breeze editorials, all of this out using terms like witch hunt, political, personal, he said, she said, this is just really simple for me, and that is right and wrong. And right and wrong require facts and require, require evidence. The only thing, in my opinion, that would need to take the step further would be to provide evidence and sworn testimony in a hearing. Whether that hearing is a public hearing that is held here, whether that is through the State's Attorney's Office. When a property management company is subpoenaed for the lease for a dwelling, they have to supply it or be held in contempt. When people are brought to the stand to provide sworn testimony of what they saw, what they observed, they can risk perjury if they want, but the truth has to come out. And so for me, it is simply about fact, not about fiction hearsay, who likes who, who's got a grudge against the other. It doesn't have any, anything to do with that with me. It's where did the council member reside on May 10th through September 28th? Certainly, if displacement happened because of the hurricane, that's an extreme circumstance. So for me, it's May 10th to September 28th, not what's said on the driver's license, not what it said on the voter ID card. Where were the clothes, the food? Where was the car overnight in the driveway? Where did the candidate reside? And if we need to get sworn testimony and if we need to subpoena all the paperwork that identifies the truth in that matter, then so be it. And so for me, it doesn't matter whether the issue was brought forth anonymously and then the person fessed up. It doesn't matter whether the governor's office says, "I won't take an accusation that's anonymous." It's just a matter of right or wrong. And so if the facts are brought to bear through a subpoena, through testimony, and the council member did reside in District 4 on May 10th continuously through September 28th, so be it. But the evidence right now does not point to that, not one bit. And I too want our electorate to believe that valid candidates run and that they have valid candidates to vote for. I'm sure there have been many candidates that have said, "Man, I'd love to run, but I don't live in that district." There's probably dozens of them over time that have said, "Oh, man, I'd love to run for that seat, but I don't live there." Not, "I wonder how I can make it look like I live there." So to me, it was an after the fact, "Make it look like I lived there." That's what all the, what's being brought to us as trust me evidence is pointing to. And so if we have to prove that trust me evidence by actually seeing a lease and demanding it, then let's see it. That's, that's where I stand and why I seconded the motion.
Thank you. Since there's no other lights on, I guess I'll weigh in again. Well, go ahead, Councilmember Shepherd. Give you the opportunity.
To the council members that spoke, if you're basing your decision on what was said in the report with my name, I can tell you everything where my name was used was false information. Wasn't even close to the truth. Just made up information was put in that report with my name tagged on it. So don't base your decision on anything that was said with my name, is all I'm saying. And I agree with a lot of other things you said, but just don't let that sway you in any way because I'm telling you that was false information. And I have multiple addresses myself. I have more than one address. So people are gonna start looking, you know, where, where I go more or less or, you know, not saying that's relevant here, but, you know, just wanna say, make sure that you're basing your decision on facts and not made up fiction. And I believe a lot of the things in the report were made up fiction. That's my two cents.
Councilmember Cosden.
I wanted to turn off my light. I'm not gonna say it. It's not worth it.
Okay. Yeah, and I mean, I would welcome any investigation, you know. I know there's a speaker who came forward today and, and made accusation. I think that the complaint it made on Councilmember Cummings, we had a meeting with two other council members in my office about this, totally inaccurate. And I would welcome the investigation to prove that otherwise. But for me, again, when I look at this investigation, at best, it's incomplete. And it's not incomplete because the investigator that we hired wasn't able to get the information. It was either she wasn't provided the information or individuals elected not to participate in the investigation. Without the powers of subpoena, then that's, that's difficult. That's difficult. And unfortunately, I think in order for us to find a complete investigation, those powers of subpoena will have to be utilized. They will have to get bank statements that shows whether there was checks written to a landlord or at a council member Cummings' bank account to those landlords. You know, I always said, "Most investigations follow the money. You'll usually find the truth." So I think that's something that needs to be done. The leases that you had mentioned, Councilmember Steinkie, I think they're there. If you read through the information that's in the investigation, there is a lease. We did, we know there's a lease. We need to get a copy of that particular lease. So my recommendation is for to turn this over to the State's Attorney's Office, only because then you have an outside independent state agency that's conducting the investigation. Hopefully, there will be no bias. That's my recommendation. For me, to support the motion that Councilmember Welsh had made, if I knew the investigation was complete and all the facts were there, I'd support it 110%. I don't know if we're there yet. So that's why I think that this investigation needs to continue with someone else. I think it's better if we, we have an independent agency that does the investigation. That's just my personal belief. Let someone like the State's Attorney's Office look at it. And if it shouldn't be in her venue, then either the investigation's closed or they move it to the venue that's applicable with the findings that are in the investigation. So that's, that's for me. Councilmember Cosden.
Thank you, Mayor. So here's my issue with that and why I wanted to talk about this today as opposed to waiting until after hiatus. We've already had someone in office for seven months of a four-year term. That's a lot, seven months. And we could have the same person in office for months, months, months more if we do the state attorney investigation. And then what might happen is not anything that we might expect or hope for. And so then we end up having an unqualified person in office for years, maybe. And I just, I feel like we have this chance right now. To me, this, this investigation is complete. It's very obvious and every single person up here knows where she lived. And we know, we all know. And it's just, I don't want to kick the can down the road and just hope someone else will handle it because I think we have the chance to right now. Thank you.
Councilmember Steinkie.
As I read the charter, and the reason why I seconded the motion is, is that when the feeling of council is that the accusations are true, that they can ask for that forfeiture. And at that point, the accused can ask, instead of forfeiting, can ask for a hearing. So in fact, that was, that was what I was seconding, was do we, do we request forfeiture? And if that forfeiture is not acknowledged, then a hearing is what comes next, as I understand it. My understanding is wrong. I'm more than happy to be corrected. But I believe that if the forfeiture is not voluntary, then I believe that a hearing needs to be held. And just as the charter says, that facts can be subpoenaed and testimonies, you know, can be given. So it has to be one or the other, I believe. It either has to be a forfeiture or a hearing has to be scheduled. That hearing would be one that's conducted by the State's Attorney's Office, FDLE, however, whoever. But I absolutely agree, there's gotta be a demand for evidence. If the evidence is not in line with the report that we were given, then we'll find that out. If it is in line with what we were given, then it's pretty cut and dried.
Mr. Deputy City Attorney, would you like to weigh in on that?
Yeah, the, the way the charter reads is initially, there will be a charge against whatever council member, okay, council member. That charge is, which we're in unchartered territory here, pun unintended, but basically, we have never done this before. The charge has to come from counsel. She is, there's going to be a document setting forth what her violation is. At that point in time, you know, subject to forfeiture, the accused can say, "No, I'm not forfeiting it. I'm not forfeiting my seat." Then subsequent to that, there needs to be a hearing set. The notice of the hearing gets sent to that particular counsel person and the notice, and then the hearing is conducted. The counsel can subpoena witnesses. Now, the subpoena power is pursuant to your charter. It's not pursuant to any statute or anything else as the state attorney has, as FDLE has, and as the Ethics Commission has. They have statutory power that the courts routinely hold people in contempt when they do not comply with such subpoena. Charter provisions that provide subpoena power are this, are just that, they're charter provisions. So then we would have to take that to a court and say, "Somebody did not comply with the subpoena" and have a hearing in front of a court to determine that. What I'm saying is that the charter, the statutory provisions for contempt are stronger than your charter provisions. So they may be able to get what you're looking at or for they be in the other agencies better than you can obtain them and have the penalties if somebody violates it. I could be wrong, and I know the police chief's back there, so he could probably verify this, but the statutory provisions are gonna have more, of more weight in a court than your charter provisions. So just kind of remember that in the back of your mind when you're trying to get somebody before you for a hearing when they refuse to. Then you're not getting any evidence that you want.
Any other comments, Councilmember Steinkie?
No.
Thank you. Councilmember Long.
So I could see some confusion on, on some faces up here based on what Mr. Bartosz just said. And that's kind of the direction I'm heading. And I think you guys wouldn't be surprised to learn, I'm looking at this through a different lens here. Now, you had mentioned, Mr. Bartosz, when you were explaining that, that we bring forth that charge. And then she says, in your words, "I will not forfeit my seat." And then that initiates the hearing that you talked about. So at the end of that hearing, it's my understanding that the charter provides the same recourse at the end, is that we can basically compel her to forfeit her seat. So again, at the end of all that, could she again say, "No, I choose not to forfeit my seat"? That's the question. She could do it the first time.
This is all hypothetical.
Correct.
Okay. And I'm, your, your ruling, if it is to forfeit, I believe, would take effect right then and there. What, I, I, I don't represent, I represent you all as a whole, as the whole body. If you're asking me what her next step or what that person's next step will be, I cannot tell you. I imagine there will be some court filing, well, you know, there will be an injunction. And it'll be an injunction to prohibit the forfeiture pending the statutory provisions of who may be able to remove a sitting counsel person.
Okay, so that's my point. It sounds like it'd take quite some time.
Correct.
And so for me...
It could continue to go on longer than an investigation by a state attorney, by an FDLE, or by a commission on ethics.
So you've actually made my point for me, and I appreciate it. So not to kick the can, and I don't mean that to be snarky, but I think to me, at the end of all this, it's unclear at best whether we have the power at all to, to remove a sitting elected official. And so for me, instead of going through the charade of holding a hearing and doing all these things to reach the same conclusion at the end, and then more likely than not defer our conclusions to this agency, to me, the more expeditious way would be to do that at this point in time and avoid the sideshow that we'd be putting on here with very little, if any, effect at the end of the day, based on what the city attorney, deputy city attorney had just said. So that's, just to explain, I'm not, I know I'm not changing any minds, but when I vote against it, it's for that reasons. It's not that I don't believe or disbelieve that the facts that have been presented. It's more procedural on my end, that I think the more efficient manner would be to have somebody else handle this that actually has the authority at the end of the day to carry out whatever action they deem fit. Thank you.
Councilmember Cosden.
Thank you. I had a question, but it was answered.
Thank you. Councilmember Hayden.
Madam City Attorney, can you read back the motion?
Madam City Attorney, he's got a suit on.
Madam City Clerk, I'm sorry.
You got promoted too.
We've been dealing with attorneys all day today.
So I apologize to the council. I have it on my list to ask if Councilmember Welsh would please restate his motion.
I guess my motion was to charge Councilwoman Cummings with conduct constituting grounds for forfeiture of office.
So are you asking her to be removed from office tonight?
I, I don't know. I would have to, is, are we asking her to be removed or are we charging her with the, if maybe the city attorney could clarify?
This is not the forfeiture period, okay? That, that would be at the hearing.
I understand if that wasn't the motion.
Almost come back at another meeting with a charging document that you vote on.
Okay, so there can or cannot be a motion tonight?
There can be a motion, yes.
To look into?
There, there can be a motion to...
The multitude of motions.
No, I...
There, there can be a motion to, as, I'm trying to find the language that was in here. Lacks at any time during the term of office, any qualification of the office prescribed by this charter. Because that's what you're, 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 you're charging her with, or based on the report, that she failed to continue residing or even residing at the very beginning of the election process of residing in District 4.
Okay.
So you would be, the motion is to actually create a charging document that constitutes a forfeiture for office.
Okay. Then that would, another, then there would be another meeting held to, to...
Create the, or approve a charging document.
Okay.
And then subsequent to that, there would be, there would need to be a date for the hearing and, and so forth, once there's a refusal to forfeit the office based on the charging document.
Okay. So if this motion fails tonight, then it's over?
No. Then there could be a motion that Mr. Long and Mr. Gunter have been talking about, about moving it to, or forwarding this report to the Election Commission, FDLE, or the State Attorney's Office for further investigation.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that this one motion didn't close all, all other options that might be available to us moving forward.
Are you asking if there should be dual processes going at the same time, which I would not recommend?
I'm just trying to, one, I wanted to understand what the motion was, which wasn't clear. Now it appears to be. And then where we move forward from that, so...
This motion can approve, can be approved, then probably don't do anything except for that. This motion can be denied and another motion can be brought forward.
To take it to the...
Take it to, right.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Steinkie.
In true fashion, I've always said that I'll keep an open mind until we vote. And getting further clarification from our deputy attorney, hearing other comments on the dais, I would like to remove my second and am prepared to make another motion.
I'll be the second.
All right, so, Mr. Deputy City Attorney, it sounds like Councilmember Steinkie has removed his second, but Councilmember Cosden has seconded Councilmember Welsh's motion. Is that accurate?
Once Mr. Steinkie removed his second, you didn't remove your motion or withdraw your motion. Mayor's supposed to be the...
Sir, if I hear another outburst, I'm gonna ask you to leave. You've been here long enough to know the rules. Councilmember Steinkie, at this, you still have the floor, you're okay?
I'm good.
Okay. All right, well, I don't see any other lights on. We have a motion and a second on the floor. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Welsh?
Aye.
Cosden?
Aye.
Cummings? I have, the motion is to charge Councilmember Cummings with constituting grounds of forfeiture of office.
That's a yes or no?
No.
Gunter?
No.
Hayden?
No.
Long?
No.
Shepherd?
No.
Steinkie?
No.
Two ayes, six nays, motion failed.
Okay, I guess I'll, I'll pass the gavel. I'll make a motion that we turn this investigation over to our State's Attorney to further investigate using their, their office, powers for powers of subpoena, to complete that investigation and then provide a report to this council once that investigation is complete.
Do I, I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Councilmember, is that Councilmember Welsh?
So we're gonna turn over with a recommendation? Is that what we're doing? Recommending the State's Attorney investigate this?
That is correct. That turn the report that we have up to this point over to the State's Attorney's Office and let the State's Attorney's Office investigate it to see if, one of a few things, if there's any criminal element to this or if there's any regulatory type...
Are we gonna send a letter recommending... Are we going to send a letter recommending an investigation as a collective council?
Yes, that's my understanding. That's what the motion is.
Not just turn it over and see what they do? We're making a motion saying that we're requesting this investigation.
Cape Coral City Council is requesting for you to complete the investigation that was started by our investigator.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Cosden?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. Can we also include the Election Commission in that letter? Can we also send it to the Election Commission?
Well, I don't think you would want the redundancy in my discussions with the State's Attorney. If she feels that her office isn't the appropriate venue, that she would forward it on to the appropriate state agents.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Steinkie?
Thank you. That was the motion that I was going to make after I found out that our subpoenas would not be enforceable, that it only made sense to have an enforceable agency involved where we can compel a party holding evidence to get to the bottom of it, to get to the truth, and determine right from wrong. That was the motion I was going to make, so thank you.
All right. Any other, any other comments? Seeing none, we have a motion and a second. Does any of the council members need to have the motion restated? Okay. Madam City Clerk, call the roll.
Welsh?
Aye.
Cosden?
Aye.
Either aye or a nay.
I know, it's just all the information's there, that's why I'm just kind of like put in a situation where you have all the data that was sent from my attorney. So I have to say no.
Hunter?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Steinkie?
Aye.
Seven ayes, one nay, motion carried.
Okay, we will move on to item six, time and place of future meetings. We have a regular meeting of the Cape Coral City Council scheduled for Wednesday, July 12th, beginning at 4:30 PM here in council chambers. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Meeting adjourned.